You're watching City Channel 4, your window to our community.
The first topic on our agenda is neighborhood stabilization. It looks like Jeff is going to be speaking initially.
Yeah, good evening, council. Jeff Fruin, city manager, and here to talk to you about neighborhood stabilization tonight. Much of what I'm going to cover tonight while I'm presenting was crafted by a team effort largely from the legal staff and staff with the Neighborhood Development Services Department. So we're going to jump right in. I figure we'll spend probably 20 or 30 minutes on the presentation, and then I think there'll probably be a good discussion afterwards. Our focus tonight is on occupancy regulations in our neighborhoods. And if you can see the italics up there, I realize that's a small print. Maybe you can see it a little better in front of you. That's the current definition that we have of a family in our code. And I would argue that that's the most critical regulatory tool that we have right now to ensure that we have healthy, stable neighborhoods around our inner core community. The regulation, as you can see, it defines a family as one person, or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, or placement by a government or social service agency occupying a dwelling unit as a single housekeeping organization. A family can also include two or more persons that are not related. And so effectively, what we're saying here is our limit is three unrelated. And that's how we govern the occupancy in our neighborhoods. This attempts to balance the market between rental and homeownership and protect the health and safety of the public and not overburden our public infrastructure and our municipal services that we offer. This is a pretty common regulatory tool that's used not only in the state of Iowa, but also throughout the country, probably the most common way that university communities would manage occupancy or regulate occupancy. And also has been well-tested in the courts throughout the country and upheld. It is an effective tool for us. It's a very simple standard to understand, and for the most part, we get voluntary compliance. You can see from that last bullet point on the slide that over the last five years, we've only had 26 citations for occupancy. We have over 18,000 rental permits in the community. So if you were to take those 26 citations and divide by the total number of rental permits there, it represents less than .15% of all rental permits. This all, the reason why we're here tonight, is House File 134. It's going to change how we have to manage occupancy in our community. This was signed by the governor late this spring. And I'll skip right down to B, which effective January 1, 2018 restricts the city from regulating occupancy by familial or nonfamilial status. So essentially, everything I pointed to in that previous slide is no longer going to be available to us come January 1 of 2018. I do want to point out Section A above, which is not underlined. And I think it's important to note that the state is still expressing a recognition that cities need to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. It talks about preserving historic areas of the community, and it empowers cities, and that word's in there. Any city is hereby empowered to regulate and restrict height, number of stories, size of buildings, structures, the percentage of lot that may be occupied. And you can see the remaining lot there. So clearly, the state is still recognizing that cities need to be able to regulate occupancy in order to protect the community and the neighborhoods within. So why does this matter? Why do we care if we have balanced, healthy, stable neighborhoods? Why do we need to do anything, maybe? Clearly, when you remove the occupancy restriction that we have right now, and you go from a situation where an owner of a single-family home could rent to up to three unrelateds, and now that restriction's gone, and they can rent to five, six, seven, or more unrelated individuals, it tips the market very heavily in the favor of rentals. And the stability of the neighborhood starts to fall apart and become one-sided. Balanced neighborhoods support a diverse economy and a healthy downtown. If you think about the areas that are walkable to the downtown, if you had one single demographic, let's say your demographic was all 18 to 22-year-olds that lived within a walking distance to downtown, because that's what the market kind of forced property owners into or led them into, you would see a downtown business community that catered directly to those students. The types of businesses that would invest and open up shop in places like downtown and North Side marketplace would cater in large part to that demographic. Clearly, over the past 10 or more years, we've been trying very hard to not only diversify our neighborhoods, but also diversify the downtown business mix. And it's key that we have stable neighborhoods, diverse neighborhoods, that appeal to diverse populations surrounding the downtown for that purpose. There's a whole list of other reasons why it matters here. Housing affordability. Certainly, this council has talked a lot about affordable housing. If you are taking away some of the older areas of the community, if you take away the homeownership opportunities, because there's such a strong rental market, that absolutely has an impact on housing affordability. Some of the older neighborhoods that we're focusing on here were built 50, 60, 70, even longer periods ago. The municipal services that have been designed around those neighborhoods, the public infrastructure that supports those neighborhoods, were not designed for the level of occupancy that we may see if we don't take any action post-House File 134. As with public infrastructure, a lot of the homes that may become occupied to greater extents were not built with that purpose in mind. They may not be up to current code standards. And we have to look critically at measures that we need to take to ensure the tenant's safety, but also the safety of the public in those neighborhoods. There's a lot of character and charm and historic value to our urban core neighborhoods. We have to ensure that we have regulations in place to keep the character as well. Viability of neighborhood schools. Certainly, if, again, a neighborhood becomes one-sided in terms of the demographic it's attracting, particularly with the student market that we have here, I would have strong concerns for the viability of neighborhood schools. I think we would see a continued move away from homeownership and families investing in these neighborhoods, more to the rental side. And I question whether some of those neighborhood schools could continue to stay relevant over the long term. The last two deal with some of the nuisance and property maintenance concerns. And I think those are pretty self-explanatory there. So what do we do? We have until January 1 to come up with another set of regulations. Again, the state has empowered us to do so. They've just said that we can no longer do so utilizing familial status. So we're going to outline seven strategies tonight. I want to emphasize that none of these are fully fleshed out at this point. These are ideas, some illustrative examples, so you can get a sense of where, as a staff, we are going. And then you can redirect us, offer some additional ideas, suggestions, or tell if there's anything that you're not necessarily interested in us pursuing. So real quickly, I'll go through the seven, and there's a slide that supports each of these seven points. Ensure that neighborhoods support both homeownership and rental opportunities. Basically, what we're saying is here, we need to come up with a set of regulations that leads to the market supporting both types of opportunities in our communities. We need to prohibit investments that detract from the neighborhood character and overburden city infrastructure and services. We have to make certain that nuisance and criminal infractions are handled swiftly and efficiently to preserve that neighborhood character. In short, this means we're going to have to step up our enforcement activity. And we've got some ideas that we'll share with you on how we might do that. Protect the health and safety of the occupants in the rental units. You all know that we've invested a lot. We continue to invest a lot of money in housing programs in Iowa City. I think we need to just take a step back and look at all those programs and ensure that they are helping us achieve the objectives in here. And I'll get into some examples of that. But let's make sure if we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on housing programs, that they're helping us achieve the goals that we need to achieve. Six is encouraging the development of student-oriented housing. We have to recognize that we need more supply, particularly for the student market. I think we've seen some success in the Riverfront Crossings District, how we changed some zoning to incent development in those areas. I think we need to take another step back, look at some of those surrounding areas, and see if there's more opportunities for purpose-built student housing in appropriate locations that are walkable to campus. And lastly, is a recognition that we need to partner with stakeholders to engage, educate, and empower the neighbors. City government may not have all the solutions. Some of the solutions can be done in partnership with the university, with student government, with neighborhood associations. We need to figure out what we need to do as a city to empower those groups to take the steps that they feel are necessary as well. So we'll walk through each of these seven strategies pretty quickly. And again, you're not going to see fully fleshed out ideas here. You're going to see concepts that we have that need some more thought and attention before we can bring you any specific code change recommendations. We know we have to replace the familial relationship code language, and we need to do so in a manner that balances that market that I've talked about a few times. What we're looking at right now is a regulation on the number of rental permits and the occupancy levels. And we would look at that on a neighborhood basis, or perhaps even a block-by-block basis. We've seen examples of a few communities that have done this elsewhere outside of the state of Iowa. That appears to be an effective strategy. But we don't know what those numbers may be. So what we'd be looking at is saying, no more than X number of rental permits per a specific geographic area. What I really like about that strategy is that it achieves that balance in the market. If you know that there are no more rental permits that can be sought or pursued in that area, you're going to ensure some continued homeownership opportunities. Obviously, you get into a lot of studies and thought in determining those levels at a neighborhood. What is the appropriate percentage of units that can be rented? But you also have to recognize that some of those neighborhoods may already exceed that number. And so we're probably going to get into a situation where we need a grandfather permit in, or rental permit in. But again, those are things that we would fully flesh out in the next several months. Prohibiting investments that detract from neighborhood character and overburden city services. Because of the occupancy restrictions being lifted here come January 1, we just need to make sure that additions onto properties, enlargements of properties, and even new construction, if you have demolition and a new construction, are done so in a manner that does not detract from the character, that hopefully adds to the character of the neighborhood. So we've got to be careful not to start getting into a situation where we get a bunch of poorly planned appendages kind of built on to some of these older structures that really start to detract from the neighborhood and not only impact that property, but all the properties around it. The last three bullets are some examples of things that we're looking at, and they speak a little bit to the city infrastructure and services, but also to the neighborhood character. If you are going to be increasing the occupant load in dwelling units, you may need, or you may think you need to increase the amount of hard surface on your property to accommodate parking and other requirements. We want to make sure that we have appropriate code language in place that does not allow excessive paving of lot areas that not only detract from the neighborhood, but could overburden our storm sewers, which, again, in these areas are mostly older and not sized for that type of use. Also want to limit occupancies on structures based on available off-street parking. So if you're going from three unrelateds to seven unrelateds, and all seven of those have vehicles, it's obviously a burden on a neighborhood, or could be if that's magnified. We need to look at that, and look at how parking could be a tool in regulating occupancy. We also need to look at it from a municipal service end of things. And the example here is the private waste hauling. We service single-family residences. And again, if those were three unrelateds now, and it's going to seven or eight, we have to think about whether our service is really designed to accommodate that. And if not, what is that level in which they may need to provide a dumpster or go to a private option? And if they have to, say after five, or six, or seven, whatever that number may be, you have to have a dumpster. And then what are the ways in which we require placement and screening of that? And does that property even allow for a situation in which it would be appropriate to have a waste receptacle like a dumpster on-site? Again, nothing fully fleshed out, just something we need to think about. On the enforcement piece, we expect as occupancy goes up, that we will have greater enforcement challenges, and we need to be able to respond to that. It's going to require additional staff, and we'll have to look at the ways to accommodate that additional staff. It would likely be accommodated through the rental permit inspection fees. That's currently how we fund our inspection staff now. But we need to look at getting inspections at different times of days, or different times of the week. We don't do any weekend inspections now, and certainly that's when a lot of the nuisances take place. We're not able to respond to those until Monday in many of cases. We also need to look at perhaps a more proactive police department presence in the evenings. And we're doing that through kind of the lens of the Neighborhood Liaison Officer program that we already have set up here. You see a couple of other bullet points there. One other concept that we're looking at is a landlord response requirement, making sure that the landlord is responsive to nuisances. So at any time of day or night, if there's a nuisance on your property that's causing a disruption in the neighborhood, you have an obligation to respond and help remedy that situation. And if not, there could be sanctions for a lack of response. We need to look at the penalty structure that we have for nuisance properties, particularly repeat properties. And in the last five years, we have had only one rental permit that we have revoked or suspended. We've also had one where we put a reduced term on that rental permit. And again, we have over 18,000 rental permits. So I think it's safe to say we've been pretty lenient, because you all know that we do have nuisance issues in the neighborhoods. So we need to look at what is appropriate? Do we need to become a little bit more aggressive in our enforcement and dangle some stiffer penalties out there in order to get better compliance? And again, that compliance is key to providing a stable neighborhood that's attractive to different populations. If you've got a family, you don't want to be constantly dealing with a neighborhood full of nuisances. We've got to be able to be responsive and, again, make that whole neighborhood appealing to a variety of different people. We do right now require that their landlords keep an information disclosure and acknowledgement form that helps us check on occupancy levels and also notifies the tenants and landlords of different city regulations and provisions. We've never required that to be filed with the city. It's always to be produced upon request. And we would suggest an annual filing of that document now, so it's readily available to us, so we can ensure that it's being done, that folks are being notified. And it could also be available as a public record. Protect the health and safety of occupants in rental units. Again, as occupancy goes up, particularly in older homes that were not necessarily constructed for that purpose, we have to make sure that those folks are moving into a safe living environment. We are looking at moving from a two-year inspection cycle to a one-year inspection cycle for some of those properties, not necessarily all properties, but those ones where we feel that there are the greatest public safety risks. We look at things like annual furnace and hot water certifications to make sure that some of those core mechanical systems within the structures are operating properly and are basically adequate for the types of use that are occurring in that structure. From a fire perspective, a lot of older homes still would not have hardwired interconnected smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. That's something I think we need to look at. Certainly, as occupancy goes up, there's a greater risk for, there's a greater fire risk and public safety risk there. We need to make sure that, again, we're providing a safe living environment. And then, as I mentioned before, we're going to have to work closely with our police department and our inspections group to ensure that we are addressing the disorderly house occurrences in the evenings that could provide an unsafe situation for tenants. Okay, moving along to the city programs that we already have and taking a look at those. I'll give you the example of the University City program. I think you all are very familiar with that program, in which we buy a property, invest a little bit into the remodeling of that property, and then sell it. Currently, we have a 20-year deed restriction that requires that to be an owner-occupied property for 20 years. So if the party that buys that from us today wants to sell it in year 10, they have to sell it to someone that will be living in that unit for at least 10 years. We need to look if that 20-year period makes sense. Does it make sense for us to push that to 25 or to 30 years? And have that same kind of thought process with our rehab programs, our help programs, and any other way that we're investing in these neighborhoods. We need to look at particularly that owner-occupied component to it. It may not be appropriate in all cases. You know, if we're doing a rehab project that's a couple of thousand dollars, I don't know that it's appropriate for us to put that type of owner-occupied restriction on there, or at least at that length. But as staff, we need some time to go through all those various programs and see what can be done. Are there new programs? We need to look at how some other cities are addressing those. But certainly, the University City program appeals to some property owners. Other property owners want to maintain their property, but they may be willing to maintain it in a different way. So if it's a non-conforming rooming house, for example, that already can have a high occupancy load, and we can work with the property owner to essentially buy out of that use and bring them into a current compliance, that may be a more cost-effective way for the city to help achieve a balance in these neighborhoods. And then look at some of the other opportunities we have with our CDBG program. Are there some other things, like down payment assistance in some targeted neighborhoods, that could help create that balance and stability that we're looking for? This is one we talked about. I gave the example of the Riverfront Crossings area, how we very carefully considered some new zoning in that area. And you all know the type of development interest that we've had there. Are there other areas of town that are, that would be considered appropriate, particularly for purpose-built student housing, where we can make some code changes and incent some development to help accommodate the supply that's needed and hopefully serve as a relief valve for some of the neighborhoods that we're looking to preserve here? And certainly, we need to recognize the efforts that the University of Iowa has made in recent years to bring on some new on-campus housing opportunities. They're an important part of this equation, and we need to support them as they consider future on-campus housing Okay, last is the partnering with stakeholders to engage, educate, and empower neighbors. You know, most of the neighbors are probably unaware of this transition period that we're in with our occupancy. They're probably very well-plugged in to the rental dynamics in the neighborhood, but we need to make sure that they're engaged on this issue. We need to partner with the University of Iowa and student government to explore ways to proactively work to prevent the behaviors that would trigger our enforcement, and certainly eliminate those behaviors if they come up. I think we can, you know, be proactive on that front, and hopefully achieve some good results, so it's not just the heavy enforcement hand that's coming through the neighborhoods. And then there may be some opportunities for neighborhoods to take some matters into their own hands. Certainly, an engaged, mobilized neighborhood is always more effective than a neighborhood that's maybe loosely organized or not organized at all. So are there some ways we can strengthen neighborhood associations in some of these nearby neighborhoods? Are there neighbors that may be willing to look at restrictive covenants? And can we help them understand what that process is to develop private restrictive covenants that may limit some of the types of improvements that you can do in a neighborhood, you know, to preserve the, to ensure that we're preserving the character of their neighborhood? It's certainly common in more suburban-style sprawl developments, but it's a tool that could be used in the older neighborhoods as well. As you know, on your agenda tonight, we have a moratorium that is proposed, a first reading of a moratorium. And again, what I would say is, we are losing our most effective regulatory tool when it comes to ensuring that we have stable, healthy neighborhoods. We need to take some action now. There is some urgency to the matter, as indicated in the council action report that you have, that was included in your late handouts. In the past couple of weeks, we've received 40 permit applications to enlarge existing rentals. That's compared to an average of five the last couple of years. There's clearly a desire on the part of some landlords to begin to enlarge their properties. And we're not in a position right now to have a regulatory framework beyond January 1 that can manage such desires from the property owners in a way that we're comfortable with, that we feel is in line with our duties to protect the stability of the neighborhoods and the character of the neighborhoods. So we are asking for a moratorium so that we can study this issue more, that we can, as staff, more fully flesh out the ideas that I talked about here, those seven strategies. So the moratorium that's proposed goes until December 31 of this year. By that time, we would bring you a new set of regulations, ordinance changes that you could consider. Here's the map of the impacted areas. And we can talk about the rationale if you've got questions for that boundary map. And for the discussion purposes, I'll just leave those seven focus areas up there. And then I turn the floor over to mayor and council and answer any questions that you have. And Eleanor and the staff from NDS will help me out in responding to any thoughts that you may have.
Okay, folks. It's an important topic. Do you have any questions?
First of all, has anything been done with the Metro Coalition about challenging this particular file? Or because it's been proven all over the country that the other one works?
No, I don't know that there's really any grounds to challenge it. Eleanor?
There aren't any grounds to challenge it. There's been no discussion about that.
We have met with a few of the other cities that rely heavily on this tool, Ames, Cedar Falls, Des Moines. And we've shared some ideas. Some of the ideas that you have in here are also being considered by those communities. But pretty much, we're all in the same boat right now, trying to figure out the best way to do it. And unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of examples outside of the state of Iowa that we can look at, because they all, for the most part, rely on that familial status strategy.
Well, I'll go ahead and start, I guess. I mean, I would say I like virtually all the ideas that staff has put forward. Certainly, I know, and this has probably been now maybe three or four years ago, Stan, I think you drove around with Matt Hyatt and I, looking at the near north side, and looking at some of the condition of some of the housing, and trying to start thinking about some ideas of how we could address this issue. And certainly, one of the things we talked about at that time that we haven't moved forward, and I think we're at that point now, I think with no choice, and you've addressed it in here, is some sort of rental permit density. And how we do that, you know, the details have to be figured out. But to somehow maintain But to somehow maintain some balance within these areas, to get some kind of a density limitation on the number of permits. And then, along with that, I, I think so important is the increased enforcement. And, and to me, I guess I would look at it as even if we start out, just like we did with the bars downtown, we may, we may set a density, we may set a rental permit density, and the block or the neighborhood may currently exceed that, but we have to grandfather people in. But by enforcement over time, people may lose their rental permits if they don't manage their property well, which would get us down to the density limit that we have set. Or people actually enforce the rules on their property, and we're over the limit, but it still is a stable neighborhood because people are behaving more appropriately. So I, I think those are two really good tools. I mean, I think there's a ton of really good stuff in here. I'll just, the other comment I would make on some of the deed restrictions, I would certainly be open on the university housing, where we're putting in a lot of money to looking at more than a 20-year restriction. With other programs, maybe not as much, because again, I think if we put in density limitations and increased enforcement, that will ultimately take care of an awful lot of the issues.
Yeah, I would agree, the, the density approach, which, you know, the bullet or the first point ensured neighborhoods support both homeownership and rental opportunities. You know, this is something, living in the north side, I've been struggling with for years, and, you know, there's language in, in our comprehensive plan that speaks to addressing the imbalance, but it's, it's in very soft language. It's encourage, you know, it's, it's, it's that type of language. I, I do think the, the percentage approach will ensure, I mean, we need, the details need to be worked out, but it, it should ensure that the numbers won't get any greater. You know, that, that I think is one of the key issues, is even if a neighborhood is over and, you know, in the north side, and this is another issue I'd, I'd like to raise is, I'd like us to follow this up with respect to the data. You know, for years, you know, I, I'd heard that, well, we're working on the balance, and I would ask, well, what is the imbalance? You know, I, I hear we have imbalance, what is it? And, you know, the census data suggested that, in, in our census tract, the number of rentals is, as I recall, something along the lines of 80 to 85%. So, you know, that's a, and I think we can fairly assume most of those rentals are short-term rentals, and, and so, and that the numbers were actually trending higher from 2000 to 2010. So despite all the efforts, it seemed things weren't moving in the right direction. So it, it does seem to me the, the ensuring through percentages may actually work better than monitoring the unrelateds in terms of the, the overall trend with respect to stabilizing the neighborhoods by number.
I'll make a few comments as well, just picking up on what Susan and Terry and John have just said. I, I wonder first, Jeff, whether you've had a chance to talk with Kelly Hayworth and Corvo. Are they affected in a similar fashion? I do know that there are parts of the city are very close to the university, so I wonder about that.
I have not had any conversations with Corvo.
It'd be worth checking out with them.
Sure.
Secondly, could you put the map up, please, when you get a chance? Thanks. So it's a pretty big swath of the city, and I think a pretty appropriate swath of the city in general. But when I look at it and think in terms of what Susan and John just said about, oh, basically rental density and appropriate balance, I think the current rental densities vary considerably within that whole area. So there's gonna, it's gonna take some significant staff work to kind of figure out what a reasonable balance is for specific areas in the city. So I, I don't want you to figure out how to do it right now, but I can see how that would be a, a challenge. But I'm also wondering about the, basically the area around Grantwood or immediately south of Highway 6. I was pretty surprised to see it not appear on the map, and I worry, Jeff knows this because I communicated by email, and I think that's why Doug's standing up right now, but I worry that perhaps there might, if, if we adopt that boundary, it might create a short-term incentive for particular private developers to convert existing single-family homes into, you know, rental units or expand on them in a way that would not be good for that neighborhood. So what's your thought about that?
Well, the 40 permits that we received are all contained within this area or this boundary that we're going to have the moratorium. And this area reflects a lot of the areas that are close to the university, that are feeling the pressure of converting single-family houses to higher-density rental occupancies. We're not seeing anything south of Highway 6. Historically, it's not been an area where there's been a lot of pressure for single-families to convert. The Grantwood area has a high homeownership rate, one of the highest in the community. So we felt that the boundaries that we have drawn fairly encompass the area where the greatest pressure is, and we're not, we don't feel that we need to go farther south. I mean, we can, it's, I suppose, debatable, but we don't.
Okay, but you clearly thought about it, didn't you?
Yes, we did, we did think about that, yes.
I guess I wonder then, may, I, I think I have a legal question pertaining to the map then. If we adopt this moratorium with the, the boundary shown on the map, would we be able to alter the boundaries at some point in the future prior to the expiration date of the moratorium?
If, if there were sufficient grounds to do so, yes. There's nothing that would prevent you from doing some other legislative action to change the boundaries for another, for some other purpose. I think the important part for this moratorium is to keep in mind the two reasons why it's being done. Number one, the residential occupancy legislation, which, but for this rash of rental permits would not have been, wouldn't have been a problem because it's not effective till January 1st.
Okay. So I, I totally agree, the major concern is in the area bounded on the map. But if it turns out we start getting a flurry of applications for the area south of Highway 6, we could amend.
We can look at the issue at that time.
If it looks like it's justified.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. How about other questions or reactions?
Jeff, have you ever talked to the university about this, that last point that you had about the university?
We haven't had any direct conversations with them. We are going through the housing study with them right now, and I was not able to make the last meeting, but John Yap was present on behalf of the city, and I know he informed the consultants and made sure that the university players were aware of what was going on here. But between now and the time that we return to you with some of these regulations, we'll have to engage with university officials and with student government to see what the best path forward is from their perspective.
So, I mean, I think there's, I mean, Susan mentioned as well, there's a number of different, you know, things that I like that's a part of the, kind of the things that you've shown us tonight or this evening. You know, all of them seem, you know, doing all of them seem awkward from a cost standpoint. You know, how, how would we effectively, you know, have staff or additional increased patrol of some of the issues that we've talked about in prior meetings? And so I have some concerns as we discuss that, and I also have some concerns I am for, the kind of the regulation as it applies to kind of the permit density and some type of percentage. But I feel like, you know, I would really want it to be fleshed out. I also think about kind of that, that racial and socioeconomic toolkit being used, just because, you know, what's the percentage in some neighborhoods compared to other neighborhoods? Why would we make, I mean, why would you make that choice? I mean, I'd just be, there's a lot of questions I had about what that would look like, even though that was kind of the first thing that you showed, but also the first thing I was like, man, that would, that would make an impact that probably would help and benefit a lot of our, our neighborhoods from that standpoint. On slide one, I think that there's a misspelling, it's supposed to be country, not county.
Oh, thank you.
And then.
We're not regulating the country?
No, no, it's not a regulation, it was just something about the county, and I think it meant across the country. And then, just incentivizing homeownership, you know, as a person that rented for the majority of my time in Iowa City, I would, I would just say, from my perspective, there isn't enough education information out there about incentivizing homeownership. Not saying that there isn't information from a city standpoint, but how we, how we communicate or how I, you know, interact in whatever way about that information just didn't get to me. And so I think that would be another way from, from not a regulatory standpoint, but an education standpoint, that I feel like really needs to get fleshed out as you move forward, because I think a lot of people would benefit from it. I do have an issue, as we were talking about rental housing, as I think about diversity in neighborhoods, and this is just anecdotally, just from people that I know, that I know that some neighborhoods are more diverse based on some rentals. And so I'd be interested in how, again, that toolkit makes sense of all that, because I could see a situation where, I mean, you'd almost be pushing folks out of the neighborhood in order to get a particular percentage, and I would worry about that. And then my question about the university was just about, so when I used to go to school at South Carolina, they had something that had freshmen stay on campus for the first year. Is that not, that's not here at Iowa, right?
There's.
I don't think so, no.
About 94% of the students, first-year students live on campus.
Yeah, okay. So that would be something I would consider kind of.
Something we're looking at, the, the university's interested, the question with the housing study that we're doing with them right now is, is how do they get to 100%? What's it look like if they were to try to bump that up to a sophomore requirement, like a lot of university communities have done? Just trying to understand the issue.
Yeah.
Not necessarily making a commitment to go there, but what would that mean?
I want to pick up on the term reasonable balance, which I think you used and we've been using. It's a pretty important concept, but not something that can be objectively defined. So we're going to have to put some thought into that. And I also want to make sure that our student representatives understand, and any students watching, anybody else who has parents, who, any parents of students understand, this is not, clearly not an effort to demonize students or attribute any bad things to students. It's about the balance of rental versus home, rental units versus home, owned units, and about the market incentives that would be, that are being created by this new legislation that have a very strong likelihood of tipping the balance in various neighborhoods dramatically toward rental units. So that, that's a big challenge for us in Iowa City, but it, we're not singling out students as being the problem or anything like that.
I would say to that comment, though, not in direct opposition, but just thinking about the fact of, you know, I remember Jacob not talking long ago just about how that change in the occupancy requirements, you know, made it so it could be unaffordable for students. I mean, and thinking about the housing market and the current rental market as it is right now, I mean, it is.
It's would go up.
Unaffordable. And so how we, how we navigate that piece, I think is a, an interesting kind of, we're at this point, because we're forced to be at this point because of the state, and so I think we need to think about that, because having four, you know, I think you even talked about having, you know, three or I think four, five, six, it does make a, a property more affordable for students from that standpoint. And we just need to think about how that affects, because students are an important part of our population as well.
Good. I'd like to ask Eleanor a question, a legal question, of course. Since we have an item on the formal meeting agenda pertaining to the moratorium itself, is it appropriate for us, for us now to be discussing, sort of deliberating the moratorium in detail, or would it be better to reserve that to later?
There's no legal prohibition, I mean, you're talking about it now.
Okay. From a student standpoint, my only concern is when we talk about the rental permit density, is that would be realistic and pragmatic with where students are living. Like, John, I don't, I, like, specifically to like the north side neighborhood, I don't think there's any particular reason why a student might want to live there. It's just that they move there because that's where it's available. So if we were to, like, have inappropriate density regulations, say, from like College Green, then you'd push students out, out there. So I think just for the city, keep in mind that we need to make sure that we're doing what's best for the student market, because they'll move where they want to, or not where they want to, but where it's available. And I think it's just, that would be, like, realistic with who is trying to live where.
All these questions that you're having, I mean, really drive home the need for the moratorium, because we don't have the answers to that. We know that those are very good questions, but, but what's important is that we need to maintain the status quo while we figure this out, and hence the, the request for the six-and-a-half-month moratorium.
Jeff, before you go on, could I pose another question, or do you want to follow up on what you were just saying?
Go ahead.
Okay. With regard to item six, perhaps I heard something that you didn't really say, but I, I just want to make sure. With regard to encouraging, encouraging development of student-oriented housing that meets modern demands, et cetera, I, I see good reasons for doing that, but in terms of the balance of students and people owning their property, I think it's important to, to not let us imagine trying to concentrate renters in one part of the city. We need to achieve a reasonable balance in the various neighborhoods of the city, it seems to me.
Yeah, I guess what, you know, we need to, we need to take kind of a broader look at that, at the whole area that's walkable to campus and, and see where do we, where do we really want, or where do we think student housing would, again, purpose-built student housing would be best located? And, you know, we have some areas in, in town, you know, if you go south of Burlington and you look at the, the Johnson and Van Veren, those neighborhoods are long gone. You know, that, that, that tip, that scale tipped decades ago. Are those, are those areas, are they at a density that, that is, is right for us now? Are there opportunities, and I don't have the answers here, but are there opportunities in an area like that to provide some incentives through zoning, bonus heights, those types of things like we've done in Riverfront Crossings, to lead to some teardown and rebuilding in a way that adds to, to density, and it's not going to take away from that, that neighborhood, because we're not going to get that neighborhood back? And there may be others. Not saying that that's something we're going to do, but something that we, I think we need to look at.
But I think in response to that, Jim, also, with the Riverfront Crossing zoning, if you remember, there's the various regions within there, and the one just south of Burlington was more, I don't remember the, the title of that region, but the whole idea was more height, so, because it was closer to the university, walkable, and so buildings particularly for students, and again, the idea, and I think Jeff and staff had the language in here, well-managed and having the amenities that would be attractive to students, so basically a private dorm-type environment. So not like a lot of the large apartment buildings where it can be a free-for-all, I'm not saying it is all the time, but in a, in a, basically private dorms, which, you know, give the students lots of amenities that they're interested in, some structure if they need it, avoids a lot of the nuisance problems, et cetera. And so while you might say we're concentrating students in a certain area, I think that also, though, can be a very positive thing if we have the right amenities and management, and it's still close to campus so they can walk, which is what so many of them want.
Yeah, I, I would say, and it partly is due to some comments at a listening post from a while back, of exploring housing types such as microhousing, possibly boarding houses, well-managed, to try to address the affordability issue, which applies to the student housing market as much as it does the general population. And, you know, one of the frustrations with all the new development is it tends to be expensive. So how can we develop new housing which at least lowers the cost of that new construction? Because it's going to take a while for that new construction to become marketable to lower-income residents. And I would also say that I think another piece of this in my mind is, how do we incentivize, and I like to look at it as long-term versus short-term residency as opposed to ownership and rental, rental, but how do we incentivize long-term residency and homeownership? I mean, there, in, in the north side, we see people put sweat equity and, and financial equity into renovating their homes and then get hit with a reassessment. You know, whereas if, if a landlord isn't maintaining, maintaining their property, they can actually see their property values decrease, which means their taxes are lower. There, there seems to be a, you know, we need to, I think, really look at how our taxing, property taxing structure to try to incentivize what we want, which is people who are committed to the long-term viability of the neighborhood, and, and not give, in a sense, a reward to those who don't maintain their property well. And, I mean, there's some great examples in our neighborhood of people who've deeply invested. Linda McGuire and Ann Burnside took the house next. Linda McGuire and Ann Burnside took the house next to them and basically recreated it. I think that kind of, you know, inspiring effort to, because they want to stay in the neighborhood, should be rewarded rather than punished.
This reminds me of a conversation we had several months ago, maybe even a year or more ago, with our city assessor about, in which we wondered whether it was possible to assess the taxable value of, of a commercial apartment property on the basis of income generated. And I don't know where that went, if any, well, it didn't go anywhere, I guess, but I don't know why and I don't, but maybe we could pick that back up.
Yeah, I don't know if we could get the information from the landlords. I don't know that they would be required to give that.
The Iowa City Assessor is moving in that direction. I don't know if they've fully implemented that, but I could get that information from, from Brad Comer and, and share that with you, but I do know that they are moving in that direction.
It'd be helpful to have that information, please.
Jeff, you spoke about Johnson and how there are some neighborhoods that have, you know, totally tipped over. It would be interesting, I mean, again, looking at this, I mean, to Jim's point, it's not negative, but it is kind of, we're, we're bringing this up because it's a concern. How we can possibly look at kind of reclamation of some of those areas? And, you know, if we're able to kind of tip the balance, and I do like the location kind of discussion as far as that's concerned, but, I mean, it would be interesting if we were able to have a different discussion about Johnson coming from this, you know, five years down the road because of, you know, some things that we were able to work out. The other thing, can you go back to that first or second slide?
The one with the typo.
Well, the one with the code. The one with the code. No, I have the one with that one, no.
This one or?
Yeah, so Eleanor, I have a, one more. I have a code.
This is the legislation.
Code was the first one.
Never mind. I was just thinking, well, never mind. So the regulation is the number, like, we can't make a restriction of regulation based on the number of people?
Unfamiliar relation.
No, no, relationship.
Right, familiar relationships, but could we make a, could we, could it be cost prohibitive? Is that the same thing? That's, I mean, it's a silly question, but I was just thinking about that. Could it be cost prohibitive to have more individuals within the household that is different than what we'd want to regulate? Or what we want to have? And so right now we have two or, two or whatever. But if it were three or more and we would, you know, have it more cost prohibitive on the rental permit side, would that be allowed or is that exactly the same thing?
You mean, cost prohibitive, you mean in terms of?
To the rental permit, not to us.
Like you have to put sprinkling in or something like that?
Well, if you had six individuals, your renter permit would be higher.
Oh, to, to scale that?
Yeah.
We do, we do have a, a scale to ours now.
Could that then be?
Yeah, we, I think we'd look at our, our entire structure and certainly if we're going to move some to an annual cycle, they're going to be paying more instead of paying every two years for their permit. They're paying every year for their, their permit or their inspection. And that's what's going to fund the enforcement.
But, but the, what I think you're talking about is the number of people. The problem with anything based on number of people is it, it has to be, if you have a couple and five children in there, that's seven people.
That's true, right, okay.
That's the same seven as the seven.
Unrelated.
Individuals.
Can the moratorium be extended past this time if more time is needed? And the second part of that question is how much time and are we going to have to have staff, add staff to accomplish what we're going for here as far as?
Yeah, I, I think there's no question we're going to have to add staff. And, and, you know, when this, when this debate was taking place in Des Moines, the common refrain from the supporters of this legislation was cities, you already have the tools to deal with all these, all these things that you're talking about. You're talking about the neighborhoods falling apart because of noise and litter and parking. Those are all things that you're powered to deal with. And so they were really calling, I mean, they, they really told cities, you just need to step up your enforcement. And, and so it's, I think, I think we, we have to respond in that fashion. And the tricky part is how do you fund that? And, and I think you fund it through the, through the, through the permits themselves. If, if the rental units themselves are in, creating the nuisances, then absolutely we'll use those rental permits to hire additional staff, to work them on weekends, to perhaps supplement officer pay so that we can do dedicated enforcement when we're, when we're having trouble. Those are the things that we need to look at. And we don't need to wait necessarily for July first of next year to implement that. We can, we can come to you with that proposal. We, we can, you know, share with you the amount of rental income that we need to generate to fund X number of staff and how we deploy those staff. So that would all be done before this moratorium expires.
Jeff, I have a question relating to, my, my initial impression is, is I think this is an incredibly impressive presentation, but my initial sort of first blush impression is, is that it's primarily focused on the stick and not enough on the carrot. I really want to encourage staff to also look at a proactive ways that we could offer incentive to, incentivize the sorts of neighborhoods that we want. Obviously, that's going to cost money. Two examples that I would think of, everyone knows how I love the University City program. Right now, though, that's focused on, as I understand it, single-family homes occupying one home. And so what I'm wondering is that, reimagining that, would it be possible to take a unit and say there's four bedrooms in there and say, you know, we will allow someone to purchase this with University City funds that would maybe occupy one portion of that. So it'd be an owner occupied rental. You know, one of the reasons why I really love the granny flat is that the granny flat, as I understand it, that's the auxiliary dwelling unit, requires the renter to be essentially owner occupied. So you can rent up above, but the owner actually has to live there. And that's obviously important because if the renter's causing any noise, they're actually on site. Susan, I think, did you bring up the concept of sort of the private dorms? Maybe that was Jeff. Zombie Burger, that building, my understanding for this year, it's essentially functioning as a university administered dorm. And so that concept, the concept of having a resident, I know I've talked with other developers about possibly proposing that in other areas. To Susan's point, it's not students per se, it's the structure in which they rent. And so I think if there is, or anyone for that matter, you could have six non-students. So those students tend to have different hours, as we know, and it can be more of a problem. So to the extent that we could reach out to the university and see if, I mean, in some of these other, you know, units that we have in other parts of the community to see whether the university may, you know, be interested in a similar type of arrangement that'd be university administered. Now, they may not want to do that. That may be too complicated, but I think to at least reach out to them would be very helpful. And then finally, related to the University City program, we know the Board of Regents several years ago said, you know what, we're not going to fund that anymore. I wonder whether it'd be an opportunity to sort of at least reach out to them again to see whether they would give us some more sort of incentives or assistance with that because it's essentially, it's a university town. We, we both have a stake in making this work and I think this is going to be good for the university, the university as well. Deed restrictions, have any of the cities talked about essentially purchasing the landlord's right to be able to develop or rent the, rent the property? So we'd essentially purchase their ability to run out the property. Is, is that possible to do?
It's kind of what I was getting at with that non-conforming buyout.
Yeah, the non-conforming buyout.
It's a way to leave, you know, the, the city doesn't necessarily have to take ownership of it, but we can buy out some of the maybe uses that have been grandfathered in over time that, that maybe are contributing to nuisance issues or, or neighborhood character issues.
Yep, and I think that, I think that's a, sort of definitely on the right track with that. The final thing that jumped out at me in terms of something, even though I like it in concept, just doesn't seem really feasible to me. And here I'm actually thinking of the landlords here, the twenty-four, seven on-call. That, that seems to me to be a little onerous. I don't know what people think about that. As, as I understand, that would be that they would have to have a phone or someone answering the phone twenty-four hours a day. Is that, how, how would that actually work?
We require a local contact right now for all. So even if you own the property and you live in California, you have to have a local contact. Here in Iowa City or in Johnson County, actually. What we're talking about now, though, is that local contact needs to respond. And so it could be a disorderly house issue and, and we call them at midnight and say, you need to help us remedy this. And if you don't, there's additional sanctions beyond what you may be dealing with for just the disorderly house.
Okay.
Again.
I don't see that as being onerous, personally. I mean, some of these folks are making hundreds of thousands of dollars off these properties or more. And so I think they've got some responsibility.
One of, I want to talk about the University City real quick because one of the, one of the things that this, this changes, if we don't get to the percentage kind of cap in a neighborhood, properties will become much more expensive to buy out. If, if now, you know, we were buying out homes that could rent to three unrelateds, now if those same homes can rent to five or six people, the price for those units is going to go up. And you may see University, you know, the cost to continue that program on a, on a per-house basis go up with it. So that's, that's one of the kind of side effects of this legislation.
The other piece I was thinking of as, when Susan and Rocky were talking about nuisance or twenty-four, seven, could there be, I can't remember if you had that in there or not, additional consideration given to state of the actual dwelling? So what the dwelling looks like, the condition of the dwelling as well? I mean, is that, do we do some of that now? And, I mean, I just remember from the Rose Oak situation that, you know, we had some people in some dire situations. And granted, we didn't necessarily have money in there, but that was still, you know, being rented out.
Yeah.
To that extent. I mean, that would be, again, another situation where there's this concern that's being, you know, this happened because of state regulation that really gives us an opportunity to really deal with what I think is some terrible situations. And kind of going back to Susan's point, I mean, you have some folks making some money, and John's point as well, of properties that are awful. Like, I, I don't even understand, yeah, it's awful because it's the only place to live. And I would like to see some type of regulation if we could, you know, do that even within this kind of construction.
Well, we made some changes to the housing code, remember, a year or two ago? And so I think, again, the whole idea of stepped up enforcement, not only on the nuisance part, but on the housing code issues as well as some of the housing code suggestions here of potentially, you know, hardwiring carbon monoxide and fire things, et cetera.
We also created an incentive program with that, the HELP program for exterior maintenance to go along with that. And, and absolutely, while we have this, while we're, while we're looking at the code here, we'll, we'll try to keep as broad a perspective as possible. In your late handouts, you received a letter from UISG about some safety measures that they want to take a look at. We've had conversations with UISG. We think that there's some common ground there that we can work with them on and it makes sense to do it at the same time we're ushering in a number of these other changes.
I, I think the idea of redeveloping south of Burlington, I know I've spoken to Jeff about this. I think that would be a great idea. It's, it's really, I, I can't think that that environment down there is good for the students. I know there, in the central district plan, there's quite a bit of discussion about that area. It's already, I believe, rezoned as a redevelopment area. So I, I don't see there being anything to lose there and we could, you know, it could be a big win. The, the other, the other thing I would say is, you know, a fair number of, of houses are being purchased in our neighborhood by parents of students. And so I'm assuming that the, this percentage approach would capture that group as well.
You know, if it qualifies as owner occupied, it would not.
Well, there would be, there would be those living in the unit who are not, who are renting, basically.
Yeah. Sue or Eleanor?
Yeah, we've talked, we've talked about redefining rental to eliminate that situation where you've got a one percent rent.
I think that's.
Owner who's an occupant.
Yeah, because that's critical. We're seeing, increasingly see that, seeing that not only in our neighborhood, but I understand in Longfellow and various parts of.
So if there was any, you know, exchange of compensation for.
So basically, if anybody's living in the unit that is not, I guess the family issue's out. Like, how, how do you word that so that somebody puts their kid on as, you know, twenty or forty percent owner? I mean, can you still get that, that it has to be a rental if they have other people living in the house that are not owners? Or are you getting at it from the fact that there's an exchange of money?
The latter, yeah.
I'd like to bring up two issues. One is to pick up on the point about the area south of Burlington. John, I think you were referring to South Johnson Street, South Van Buren is where you, probably from Gilbert Street over to Johnson, I guess. South of Burlington. Five or six years ago, I talked to Tom Marcus about that and said, I, I think it'd be great to be able to focus some attention on that area and try to imagine ways to transform it for the better. We can't do everything, of course, but there might be discreet interventions that could take place. And if we could look at that, that'd be great. The other thing I wonder about has to do with the university, especially with regard to the housing market analysis that is being conducted at the moment. It's my understanding that that analysis is not considering the recent change in state legislation. I wonder if it's too late to get an amendment into that analysis. I know it'd have to be jointly approved by the university in Coralville along with us. But I wonder if that would be a possibility.
We could, we can have that discussion. Things are, are so fluid right now and we don't know what we might enact. That can also, you know, counter the state legislation. So it's going to be hard to get anything really to hang your hat on, but they might give us some useful insight. We'll ask about that.
The only other comment I would make is while we're talking, I, I think it's important that we focus on what, the neighborhood stabilization issue. And I think that area that we're talking about, south of Burlington, I think, as you said, John, is already gone, if you will. Now, do we want to try and make improvements? Yes, I, I mean, it's like all student housing. So to me, there's a lot to do and the focus needs to be on stabilizing the neighborhoods that we haven't, quote, "lost" yet. So.
I agree.
Okay, I, I think we want to make sure staff has.
Where the priority has to be.
Yeah, I think we want to make sure staff understands that.
Well, and along, and along those lines, it would seem to me that we really want to, I mean, there's several recommendations, like, or especially over these next six months, that we could really narrow down the, the top two or three most critical ones and focus on those moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, right now, particularly in Neighborhood Development Services, all divisions within that department are stretched pretty thin right now. There's a lot of planning initiatives going on. There is a, a ton of construction happening that's requiring a lot of inspection attention. This, this will put at the top of the list, but understand that things will be bumped down. So we'll do our best to keep previous commitments on schedule, but it's not realistic that we'll meet all the deadlines of some of the, the past commitments. So there may be a few things, for example, in the Affordable Housing Action Plan that need to slip a few months. Again, we'll do our best to keep things on, but we've got a very limited period of time here to study this issue, to develop what we think are appropriate measures to take to stabilize these neighborhoods and then to get them in front of you and, and to go through, you know, a couple of months' process for you to debate and hopefully adopt whatever we present.
Whoa. So you kind of, I wasn't going to say anything until you just said that. You know, are we, are we thinking about hiring staff in this moratorium period? Not just in the moratorium period, but hiring staff to?
No.
I, I understand the priority piece, but I'm also, you know, there are competing priorities here. And so, you know, I, I don't want to, kind of what you said, you know, kick affordable housing down to like, you know, option five, when I feel like that's still kind of around neighborhood stabilization. But I understand the staffing constraints and so, you know, is this something that we have to consider or think about?
You know, there may be, you know, there, maybe an outside consultant might need to help with, with some aspect of gathering data. But I don't think that bringing on a, you know, by the time you hire for a staff position and, and get them in and get them acclimated to the, the community and the issue, this moratorium period's going to expire. It's, it's really going to be an in-house effort to, and we've got the staff with the expertise, the, the community knowledge to put together a really good solution for you. I'm confident in that. But again, it's the staff that's stretched right now and.
Jeff, you anticipate that the staff would come, additional staff would come out of the increase in revenue of the additional fees? Is that what you're thinking?
And I'm talking enforcement staff, not, not planning positions, but inspection-type positions, potentially police positions.
Kingsley, I, I hear your concern about pushing the affordable housing, you know, and those issues out a little bit. But I see this as absolutely critical to get done in the next six months so that we can get the, the legislation in front of us and passed before January first that, that staff and we deem appropriate because if we don't, we're going to have changes made that we can't undo. And they're going to be critical, I think critically damaging to some of these neighborhoods, so.
Well, I don't disagree. I mean, my, my point is along the lines of, I mean, and kind of Jeff answered my question from the standpoint of if we need to hire an outside consultant, I mean, and granted, that's council approval, to kind of make sure that we're not necessarily spending all our resources on some data analysis, some other things and being able to do that. I mean, my issue is, again, when I think about neighborhood stabilization, affordable housing is within that.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
I mean, so part of it, you know, if we need to have that stopgap, and I know NDS doesn't work for us, there's additional people that need to come. doesn't work for us, there's additional people that need to come from that standpoint, I'd be interested in, you know, doing that pretty quickly within the next month.
You know, for example, if there's, the mayor mentioned, you know, could an amendment be done to the current housing study? I don't know what that might be, but, but perhaps there's some, something as far as data collection that, that, that firm can offer us and produce for us in short time that frees up our staff for other purposes. If those types of things are identified, we'll, we'll absolutely pursue them. But I, we haven't identified those right now.
Yeah, so I currently understand the challenge that NDS staff face here. Maybe you could provide us with some feedback, say, a couple of months from now?
Sure.
About how that balancing is taking place within NDS and how they're doing with the competing priorities.
I think the good news is, is, you know, when, when you talk about the Affordable Housing Action Plan, we provided an update a couple of months ago. We're on schedule, and we've accomplished a number of the things that we set forth to. There's only a few remaining items as we, as we get through the summer and into the fall. The form-based code study, you know, we're on schedule right now to be presenting that to you in August. So things are progressing on those, on those major initiatives. So it's not, I don't want to paint a picture like everything's coming to a screeching halt, but I want to make it clear that this is, from our perspective, the top priority. And if push comes to shove, other things will have to take a backseat for, hopefully not an extended period of time, weeks, months.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Very thorough presentation and good discussion among the council members.
I mean, Rockney labeled it impressive. I didn't see any colors or anything. That's, that's tough.
Okay, let's move on to the next topic, clarification of agenda items. I want to say that item 3D6, resolution awarding the Riverfront Crossings Park Phase 1 contract, is going to be pulled for separate discussion. So we'll get into that after, you know, once the formal meeting begins.
I forgot to write down the number, but I had mentioned this to Jeff earlier today. Could you or somebody give us a quick explanation of the tenant-based rental assistance program that we're talking about reallocating $200,000 to that because of a return of some CDBG money?
I will.
Thank you, Doug.
The tenant-based rental assistance program is money that's being reallocated from HUD funds, which is necessary because we need to commit those on a, on a two-year basis. And the way this operates, and we've used this in the past, not, it's probably been 10 years ago since we had a tenant-based rental assistance program with these funds, but it's basically Section 8 vouchers given out to families under the same program guidelines, except different revenue source. It'd be home funds. And so what this does for us is it'll, it'll assist 34 families approximately for two years. It therefore shortens the waitlist a little bit. We're now on a two-year wait, and so we'll be able to, once this is approved, we'll start pulling these families off our waitlist as of July 1st, around, around that time period, I should say, and get them housing assistance within the community. So there's a, there's a positive there. The other thing it helps with is a program balance in terms of our capacity. HUD restricts us to not assist more than 100%. So every year, with the turnover that we have within the program, we have to make sure that we lease up more than 100%, and then we have to, you know, reduce down in order to not be penalized for going over that number. So when we have these tenant-based rental assistance with our turnover, we can make sure that we stay within that 100% parameter. So that's a couple of reasons that we looked at it. The other thing is that going into the following year, we initially came up with this idea also because we were concerned about the HUD budget and how it was going to impact the funds that were coming to the housing authority. This provides some insulation going into next year as well in terms of whatever happens at the federal level with regard to funds.
Thank you very much. Yep, that answers my question.
Thanks, Doug. Any other agenda items?
Yeah, I did, on 3F9, can, can we get an explanation again? I'd asked Jeff about this, on the Iowa River Trail handrail repair. I was just, I didn't know what the extent of it was when I saw the dollar amount. I was questioning.
Sure. So there'll, there'll be a couple of work items that'll go into that. There'll be a replacement of the railing there. There'll also be some work to replace a drainage swale, so it'll be some paving, a small strip of that along the trail. And then there'll also be some work to essentially take apart the wall and then put it back in place.
Exactly, what's the location?
So it's more or less under the bridge and extends a little bit beyond that.
Which bridge, I'm sorry?
So that's the Highway 6 Bridge.
Okay, okay. I just could put in a lot of handrails for $25,000.
And I think the, the project title may be a little misleading. It's a little bit more than just a repair of the rail.
I assumed that it was. That's why I was asking the question.
Yep, and I think the estimate that was originally, the FEMA estimate for the work was in the neighborhood of $25,000, and I think the bids came in about $18,000.
Yeah, lower. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
I got a question on 3F7, the day's edition of fun doing business in Iowa City. I didn't see a staff response to that. I think this is the second.
What's the topic?
Construction work in the Prentice area, you know, with 30th Century Bicycle and the disruption that's taking place there due to construction.
Yeah, we did, I don't see a staff response to this one, but I'm, I'm confident there was a staff response previously, and I think there was even an effort to have staff meet with this gentleman. I'm looking at any of the staff out here. I can't remember who engaged with him. I believe it was someone in engineering. Was it Jason? Jason, did you meet with him?
I offered to.
I wanted.
I'd extended the offer to meet with him, but he never, I never got a response to actually meet with him.
If you'd like, we can reach out again.
Yeah, I, you know, I think there's a lot of effort during the Washington Street reconstruction to manage the construction during, you know, the impacts of the construction on the businesses along Washington. This is a different kind of problem. You know, it's related to some construction projects, private construction projects, but concentrated in a certain area that are impacting, I'm sure Trumpet Blossom, 30th Century, and those businesses that are trying to operate within this context where there's a lot of dust and noise and so forth that's impacting them.
And this was actually a city project. We had a, we had an undermining of the pavement right there over top of the bridge, and we had to go in and do a repair last week. So I think that's actually what this one is in, is in relation to, not the general construction along and around. So it was more of a, kind of be more of an emergency street repair that went on, on Prentice Street last week.
Yeah, I think some, that, maybe that's something that he needs to hear, if he hasn't already, that, you know, the reason it was done during the lunch hour was because it was an emergency.
I'd like to refer to another piece of correspondence, item 3F5, which was a request from John McAtee that we post the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's pre-current president's climate data on our website. But I'm aware that the county has already done the same thing. They posted a link to all that information that used to be on EPA's website about climate stuff, but was removed by the current administration. So I just want to say, I don't think we need to do that, that the request was that we do it. I don't think we need to because, mainly because the county's already done it, and we can always refer people to that link. Should we move ahead to our info packet discussion for May 18? On item 3, which is a May 18 memo from Eleanor about an amicus brief regarding the president's revised travel ban, I just wanted to draw your attention to it and praise Eleanor for signing us up as one of the amicae, I guess. Do I understand correctly, Eleanor, that the president has now appealed this to, or not the president, but the president's office?
Right, the court served against the administration.
Yeah, so it's, it has been appealed to the Supreme Court?
Well, I believe there's been a request for cert, yeah.
Anything else on that packet? Not hearing anything. Let's move to the May 25 packet.
Appreciate the update on the planning initiatives. It was useful.
Yeah, me too. I think one of our most important tasks is to keep track of the staff, you know, and provide oversight, and Jeff knows that, and the rest of the staff know that. So it's really helpful to have that kind of report periodically.
Check of the work of the staff, not just the staff.
Just point out IP 4, Party in the Park dates, if council has a chance to stop into some of those. I think that's always appreciated. And then the IP 5, the invitation for the Merge open house.
Yeah, with regard to IP 4, my understanding is that we had proposed the possibility of having one of our listening posts take place at a Party in the Park. So the memo in part suggests what, that Kiwanis Park on June 15th or Mercer Park on July the 20th might be desirable locations, and so on. My own personal sense is that it might be better to do such a listening post earlier, earlier in, well, either near the end of the summer or early, I'm sorry, near the end of the spring or early in the summer, rather than in the middle of summer, and, and then possibly do one in late summer. So Kiwanis Park sounds like a pretty good possibility to me as a place to hold a listening post for whatever that date was. What was it?
June 15th.
June 15th? Does that sound reasonable to y'all? So we, we will need two volunteers, Kelly, to, and you can help us round up the volunteers. Thanks. Okay, anything else on that packet? Okay, moving to the June 1 packet.
IP 7, I'll take July 26.
Man, you were out of the chute quickly. Sorry, which, which date did you get?
26th of July.
I, I'm due, could I do either June the 14th or the 28th? 14th would be fine with me.
I'll do the 28th of June.
Okay, which one's?
You just said the 28th twice.
No, he's doing the 14th. I'm doing the 28th.
I'll take the 21st of June.
Jim, this was the one Pauline said, either June 21st, which Susan just took, or July 19th. Should I just put her down for the 19th then?
Yeah, if she said either one of those is viable for.
How about August 2? Is that taken yet?
So yours.
I'll take August 2.
I'll take July 5.
What's left?
The 12th.
The 12th of July?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have them all filled, Ben?
Yep.
Okay, still on June 1. How about IP number 3, pending work session topics? I noticed we don't have anything scheduled for June the 20th, so Jeff, why don't you and I talk about that tomorrow? Maybe the data-driven justice initiative would be a good topic.
Yeah, they should be back.
It sounds pretty promising, but.
Right.
And also, Pauline was telling me on the phone a couple of days ago that, what is it called? Invest Health, the project that we've assigned her to?
Right.
Is also a finalist for a major funding possibility. So she's in Phoenix right now? Yeah, so when Tracy and Pauline and so on come back, maybe we can hear from them. If, I mean, you know, if it fits their schedule and everything like that. I also want to mention IP number 4. We've received many emails, and I've received quite a few phone calls, from people requesting that we sign, that we, that I, as mayor, on your behalf, on the city's behalf, sign a letter concerning the president's withdrawal from the Paris Climate Accord. And one of the letters comes, one of the requests from, comes from the Global Covenant of Mayors, which I signed up with 18 months ago. So I intend to sign that letter unless you tell me otherwise.
Totally support you signing it.
And there's apparently, Ashka, you and I talked about this earlier, there's one other letter from another organization.
It's, it's through the Climate Mayors, so it's a more recent initiative as, I guess it's been around for a couple of years, but due to the, you know, exit from the Paris Agreement, they're reigniting the effort to get more mayors to sign on to it. And that's been a very recent request. I think that's the one that's had about 1,200 communities, cities, states sign on to.
Yeah, and it's my understanding, you and I talked about this earlier, it's my understanding that we would not be committing ourselves to certain requirements associated with that organization, but just signing on to the letter.
Yes, yes, it's just a statement in support of our current initiatives that we're already striving to achieve. So our agreement to fulfill our obligations of 80% reduction by 2050 would be all that would be required of us at this point.
People okay with that?
I would say, yeah. Are you going to add something about the stuff that we're doing as well within the letter?
I think all I'm doing is signing on to a letter that's already been pre-drafted.
Could you then edit that draft?
No, probably not. But, but I can tell you, I have been telling people who have written, I've been responding individually, telling them what we've been doing as a council and as a staff, as your city government. Yeah, okay. So any other topics on?
Just one thing, MPO meetings. Our last one, there was only three of us there, and there were no alternates, so I know Susan was sitting there by herself. I got stuck in traffic, got there a minute late, and Rockney showed up. But we need to make sure everybody gets our calls, the city clerk's office, or Jeff, and we need to get alternates there because there's times when we need all six of us there to vote. But there was only three at the last one, so we need to really work at getting alternates or getting there because it's, doesn't look good on us as, as a major city in this and only had three show up.
Yeah.
So.
Crack that whip.
Yes.
IP number 5 is workforce housing tax credits, and it concerns a memo that you wrote, Jeff, dated, I think, May 31. Do you want us to discuss that tonight, or?
Well, I think what would be helpful is, we do have one request pending, and we held it off this agenda because we wanted you to have an opportunity to talk about any potential guidelines. But if you don't want to talk about it tonight, we just need some direction on what to do with people that are coming forward with requests.
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to repeat my own point of view about this. I believe that it's necessary to approve rezonings before we approve workforce housing tax credits. In my view, to do otherwise is to devalue the public's views and to send a signal to them that we've already decided what to do with regard to that rezoning. I know we discussed it last time with regard to one, two particular proposals, but that's my view, at least with regard to, to this particular topic.
And I think, as you know from our previous conversation, I disagree. I think what we have to do is be very clear in our communication that approving the workforce housing tax credit is not approving anything else. It's not approving rezoning, it's not approving a planned site, it's not, you know, approving anything else. But we're doing it because of the lead time required for people to get on that list so it doesn't push their project out another year because of the long list of people in line for that money. And so I'm comfortable, at least for this point, to stay with the, the two requirements that staff is already using, in that the project must be consistent with the comprehensive plan and that it must not already be under construction. All we're doing is allowing them to get in line for that state money. And I just think, to your point, Jim, and I think to address that, I think we can do it with better communication in, in what we're doing. But I, I just think we're going to have people losing out on the opportunity for state money if we.
Goes quick.
And it does. I mean, you know, the, if we require the rezoning to be completed before, we would even consider approving, so.
That suggests first concern about the pending permit. I guess I'm fine with that coming before us next time.
Yeah, I am too.
It's just one more. I don't know how people feel about that.
That one does not require a rezoning? That one does not require a rezoning, or does it, you know?
I don't believe it does. It's a small, I think it's a, it's a four unit.
Yeah, it would seem to me you should have it come to us. How about, I, I don't know if any of the rest of you wanna speak about the zoning thing, but with regard, you could talk about it, or any of these other particular possibilities for inclusion with regard to workforce housing tax credits? You know, there's a list of seven or eight or whatever in Jeff's memo.
I guess I would like to keep it as simple as possible, but the one thing that jumped out at me is that I do think we need to identify what is the public benefit that we get in exchange for the dollars that we're investing. Because we are, there's a small amount of cash that we, that we are investing in these units. And so, Jeff had brought up the possibility of sort of environmental standard that they would have to meet. I guess I don't wanna have to turn it into, that it's so complex that it's sort of like going, giving a TIF or something like that. But I would like to at least have some conversation about what is the public benefit above and beyond increasing the, the housing supply, which we know that eventually, that that's gonna then lower the, you know, housing price hopefully and make more housing available. But these, but these are public dollars, and I think, as you pointed out originally, it can have a pretty significant impact on the budget, at least on the front end. Obviously, in the, in the long term, we'll get the tax revenue from it, but I, but I would like to at least see us have that discussion. So, one or two things in terms of public benefit I'd like to focus on, particularly for me, the environmental component jumped out.
Well, that, that makes some sense, but I, at this point, I, I'm satisfied with the current standard. If we wanna look at some additional considerations, that, that might be worthwhile, but I think if it's compliant with the comprehensive plan, I think that seems, that coupled with the, you know, making sure that everyone's clear as to what it is we're approving, seems, seems okay to me.
You know, I meant to mention last time, but, and, and I don't know if it helps any because maybe this is just more political than, than legal, but, I mean, you really can't bind yourself to a rezoning. I mean, the, the process required by state law can't be trumped by any kind of workforce housing tax credit. You have to go through the public hearing. You can't make a decision till you go through that public hearing, et cetera.
Yeah, I was thinking more about public perception than legally bounding, binding. Yeah.
I would say I like the current instruction as well. I'm not sure about, I mean, when you talk about public benefit, I mean, I feel like that's what we're charged to do. And I mean, my first thought was to say, you know, why would just be, why would environmental consideration be the only consideration, or unless you're using that just as an example? But, you know, for me, then it would be council determining what all those public benefit potential things could be, and I just think that's a, that's what we have to do when we, when it comes before us, so. And I agree with the state, oh, state dollar analysis as well. I mean, you know, it's, I do think we just need to work on communication and how we, how we approach that, how we approach that, because, yeah, it's money that goes quick and I think that it's an opportunity, yeah, I mean, I, I'm for it.
Just to keep the current?
Keep the current.
But it is a thousand per unit. That's what we're committing, correct?
Right, correct. But I think that's, but that's on him.
And that's on the front end? Is that, or that's overtime?
No, you can structure it in any number of ways. We could do rebates, we could do just a lump sum check, but we're not gonna commit our funds until they're actually, they're built their project.
Okay.
So, it's, it's not as if the council adopts the resolution and we cut a check the next day. It could be years down there. It could be, you know, I think you have to wait now until fiscal year 19 to get the award, so it could be a couple of fiscal years out before we even cut that check.
I'm fine, I'm fine with it the way it is, but I think maybe we could have a stock, something written when any of these comes up and that we just read it before we do any of the, the voting on it, just so the public knows that we're not approving anything other than this particular, giving the state, giving them the go-ahead to go try to get the funds, but maybe we can have something written up that would just be kind of canned at, at the beginning of it or in the-
Build it into the-
In the resolution.
Build it into the resolution. It may already be in there. I know we talk about it in our council reports. I just don't have a resolution there.
Okay, sounds reasonable. The council's view is clear.
Can I, can I make just one more? I just wanna make sure, because we hadn't discussed this before, but I did put it in the memo. We do have one person that has a building under construction that is interested in, in getting support from the city, and I have not put that forward because the supply is already being created without our investment, but clearly it's a lot of dollars for a developer. Are you comfortable with that standard, or do you wanna consider projects that are already under construction?
How big of a can of worms does that open up?
I don't think there'll be too many because it's not a retroactive benefit, so once they get their application in, you have to analyze where you're at with the project, and they can only get the credit for the portion they haven't built yet. In this case, we're talking about a, probably an 80-unit building that's, has pretty substantial construction already, you know, already completed. Again, from my perspective, it's under construction. It was, it was done so without a demonstrated need for this, and I, I'm a little uncomfortable providing public dollars for a project that's even, even the little-
I would say no.
Well, I think doing something on the spur of the moment for one developer doesn't feel good. Anything else? All right, I think we're done with our work session for today.